All right, we'll call to order the committee the whole meeting for Tuesday, May 17th. First, our agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado? Beck? Connolly?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Solfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley? Ewer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And Vogelsinger? We have 10 out of 14.
Okay, thank you. Next up is our reminder to please speak directly into your microphone. And anybody online, make sure you're muted unless you're talking. Item number three would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything?
No, we do not.
Changes? Okay. Any matters from the public? Anybody online? Because I think my eyesight's good enough to show that nobody's here.
No.
Okay. We'll go right then to item number five. Approval of the Cow Executive Minutes from March 15th, 2022. Personnel and collective bargaining. City Council Executive Minutes from April 8th, or I'm sorry, April 18th, 2022. Personnel. No comments on those? I'll make the motion that we recommend approval to City Council.
Second, Ewer.
Motion by Wolf, second by Ewer. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley? Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado? Beck? Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, 10 to 0.
Thank you. Okay, tonight's main event. Discussion on proposed uses for anticipated TIF funds.
Yes, so we added this to the agenda because one of our TIFs is going to be ending pretty soon, at the end of 2024. And so in order to utilize those funds and be reimbursed for eligible projects under the Act, we would have had to identify how we would use those funds, so they must be obligated. And then those funds must be spent prior to December of 2025. And so staff met to discuss how best we could utilize those funds in a way that would be allowable under the Act and for projects which Gary had presented to you last year when we talked about some infrastructure projects and streetscape projects that we currently had planned but had not identified funding for. And so Gary, did you want to go through that list, or?
Sure. The big projects on that list that we know that we have a need for that would fall within the TIF district, and we have roughly around $5 million that we're going to anticipate the needing to spend prior to the 2025 date. So the big projects on that list, riverbank stabilization, that alone could wipe out the entire TIF amount. There's enough riverbank stabilization to handle all that.
And for those that aren't familiar with riverbank stabilization and what that looks like, when we completed, we did a stretch of that on the west bank of the Fox River, just toward the north side of, just north of the wastewater treatment plant where we just were previously tonight, where there's some utilities there. And we needed to shore up that bank in order to protect those utilities. And it turned out really nice.
And this is TIF 1, correct?
Yes.
Another eligible use that would be a larger ticket item would be to use TIF funds for remodeling work here at City Hall. You cannot use TIF funds to construct a new facility, but you can use TIF funds to remodel, to invest into an existing facility. So the question becomes, why would you use TIF funds here? You'd use TIF funds here in order to free up general funds, and general funds then can be used outside of the TIF district. So the TIF district has a geographic limitation on it, general funds do not. Is that the best way to explain that? So that's something that staff will come back to City Council on probably in the coming months in participation to the 2023 budget talks. Couple smaller projects that we could use TIF for, the one-way conversion on North River Street. That obviously needs to come back to City Council for final discussion. One other project is the cantenary, permanent cantenary lighting on North River Street. And that project, I think also will come back to City Council, but we're working forward on design for that project this year. Those are the big projects we identified.
Right. So, and of course, any of these projects would come back to City Council for your approval again before, you know, they proceed as, you know, moving forward and going out to bid. And so this is merely getting your buy-in that these are projects worthy of appropriating these funds toward. And another thing that could happen in the meantime is we do have RFPs out requesting proposals for redevelopment of city-owned properties which are within adjacent TIF districts to TIF 1. And so it could also be that we come back at some point and say that there is the possibility of utilizing TIF 1 funds for some type of incentive that's being provided for a redevelopment project. And so things could change in the future. This is just merely trying to seek your buy-in that we're on the right track if in fact we utilize the funds for these projects.
Mark? Yeah, I guess that probably dovetails a little bit into kind of what I was thinking. I had mentioned when BEI brought their proposal in, and I know we're going to hear something soon on that, that I had talked about. I'd like, and I know others have had this thought as well, is more one-earths. So I see Shumway as another possible one-earth, and if we've got that money in there, I would expect that the cost would be significantly cheaper than what we did on River Street because River Street, we redid all the infrastructure, correct? That was what made that more expensive because we had to redo all the sewer and everything?
The water in the sewer were the lowest costs compared to the concrete underlayment, the limestone, and the bricks. And the one-earth is very, very expensive. You're building essentially two and a half streets on top of each other.
I still like the idea, and I think it's, we have an identity that nobody else has, and I would like to see that identity spread even more, in my opinion.
So Shumway is located in TIF 3 right now, and TIF 3 generates approximately $400,000 per year.
This looks like the way it's drawn, that Shumway's on TIF 1, the property is TIF 3, or TIF, yeah, the property development is TIF 3.
Oh, okay. I guess I thought that because the Shumway project is in TIF 3, so maybe the line is closed, and Walgreens is TIF 3.
And the adjacent TIFs?
Yes.
We can use the money in an adjacent TIF.
That's what I'm saying, it's all kind of...
So as long as they're connected, that can be, you can, we can do that.
So one of the things you could do is start, in essence, banking what is being generated as increments off of TIF 3 towards the one-earth project as well, and have that coincide with the development that's happening at the same time.
Yeah, because I think that, you're right, I think that would be another logical place for that. The other thing that I thought of was if this is still out of 1, how do we, you know, try to utilize that? Do we want to try to make River Street grow to the north in the same design that it is for future development there, or do we want to try to attach this to a new development if it's actually going to go through?
But 6 is River Street. I know it's adjacent, but 6 is north, and I thought that that would, and again, it depends on what comes back with the RFPs.
Right.
If somebody wants to develop those properties north, and that trumps 1 Washington, then, yeah, there's a possibility there. Either expanding what we have or adding on. And I think, yeah, I mean, things are about to pop, and I think if we could create that identity, it would really set our downtown apart from others.
Yeah, I think our priority is redevelopment projects. That's the number-one priority. But we needed a backup plan. We can't just sit around and not have a back... So that's kind of what tonight's discussion is, the backup plan?
Right. Well put.
Well, you know, if we have to do this, you know, the worst-case scenario is we do riverbank stabilization, or we do a one-earth or something, and...
Well, and I think the riverbank stabilization should still be there for us to think about and see as we go through that. Because if we can't do it with this, we still have to do it.
You still don't have to do it.
And then at that point, we have to figure out how we're going to pay for it. So that's something that we have to have in front of us and have ideas, okay, it's $1 million on this side of the river for a block and a half, and it's $2 million for the other side, you know? So we get some ideas of where that falls, you know, in cost, so that way we start to plan that out. Because the longer we wait, the worse it's going to be.
So in 2015, when we did the very isolated sections that we did, we did create a concept plan, and that was over $8 million at that time, to basically do all the city-owned frontages of the river. So that's a magnitude of cost in $2015.
Are the city-owned portions of the river, do we have a map of that? Because I know the Park District owns some, and can we identify?
Yeah.
Curious.
Sure.
And does the Forest Preserve own some too, or does the Park District own everything?
I believe they own a portion of what is the peninsula here. Riverine.
And that's something that I think, once we have all those identified, not only do we have to think about them if we use any of the TIF funds that are available for that, but also looking at the total breadth of that and saying that we need to look at how we fund that. Can we go out and find grants for that? Is there anything, infrastructure-wise, or anything that's going to be happening, you know, state or federal, for the next decade that we think might be out there that we get ready, so that way if there is any money out there, we have a plan ready to go with that we can spend the money on, that we can try and get money for? Because I think that's important.
Alan?
Your honor?
One idea that I just, Wolf and I talked about in the office this afternoon, and I don't, I haven't done the research on it. But one of the things that has been presented here, I guess it was last night, was putting the lights on the bridge here. And I'm not so sure that it wouldn't be a good idea to make a contribution toward that project. That would be something that would be very, very popular with a whole bunch of people. And as I told you last night, two weeks ago, we had the prom here, this place was just overrun with people wanting to take pictures with the bridge in the background from the Wilson Street Bridge, and people wanting to take pictures of the pond. So I, you know, I don't know how much, did she say last night how much that was going to cost?
Not that specific part of the project.
Yeah, that part of it, I don't think...
I think she was looking to the city for maybe providing an estimate of what the cost to provide electric in that area would be.
Well, that certainly could be something that we could contribute with.
We can investigate that.
Didn't she estimate the whole project was 50 to 100, which had, 1,000, which I thought was...
That was...
That was for the whole project.
...for fundraising, I think, total.
Yeah.
They're hoping to have 50 to 1,000 raised, but I don't think she ever had a firm number as to what exactly it was going to be, because they haven't even decided where they're going to get the aluminum or anything like that.
Knowing what I know right now, aluminum is insanely expensive right now. Any good quality, the prices have easily doubled, some of them tripled already this year.
I had suggested to her that she contact Aubrey Sign here in Batavia, who could, might be able to suggest some alternative materials that would be as durable as powder-coated aluminum, but less expensive and more available. But again, as you say, it's sort of in the investigatory stages, and $50,000 to $100,000 is just an estimate.
You know, the one thing that I will remember on that is, is that the actual cost of building the bridge, city didn't pay for that. That was paid for by Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning Fund, and then there was an 80/20 match, and I believe Ms. Strelstrom was living right there. So the Kane County Forest Reserve came in with a 20% match because it was going to be the bike trail and connect the bike trails. So the city, I don't believe we had... Gary, you weren't here yet.
I wasn't here yet, no?
I don't think we had any money at all in it. So I mean, if we were to throw whatever in there to get that electric right once and for all, I think that would be a nice gesture on our part, because goodness knows the thousands of people who use that bridge every year is significant, you know?
Jeff, can you get the microphone a little closer?
The number of people who use that bridge every year is a significant situation, and I think it certainly speaks to the wonderment of downtown Batavia that we have that there, and the number of people who enjoy it and use it, and, you know, enhancing it, I think, will only be a very popular moment in the history of Batavia.
So in terms of those other three projects that were initially, is there like a ranking of them as to what staff would think would be the ones we should really focus on?
Well, the remodeling project is happening this year, and we had been putting money from the general fund into capital improvement project budget to utilize those funds for this project. So if indeed we wanted to utilize the TIF funds instead of those funds, we would do a budget amendment to do that, that switch in funding source. It just seemed like as this TIF was coming to a close, that that might be a good way to, you know, utilize those funds because they're restricted, right? There's only certain types of projects that we can apply TIF funds toward, whereas we can use general funds for any city expenses that we want to.
And then how much was budgeted, etc., how much is budgeted from the general fund for the remodeling?
$1 million?
One and a half, maybe.
One and a half.
Somewhere in that range.
Yes.
And we could use the general funds for other things?
Exact, for anything.
Right.
Because they're not restricted, so you could, you know, direct it toward the one-earth. That's what we so choose.
Is there projects outside of TIF 1 or adjoining TIFs that were identified, that the general funds could be used for?
I would say yes. You know, there's, there are projects throughout our downtown that we have identified, you know? For instance, I'll just throw out there, moving the bike path from the west side of the wastewater treatment plant to the east side of the water treatment plant. So it runs along the west bank of the river, you know? And so there, yeah, there's projects throughout that were identified, but you can only port to an adjacent TIF. So we were trying to stay either in TIF 1, or we'd have to be adjacent to TIF 1.
Well, I was talking, like, if we were to use the TIF money for City Hall, that would free up that money to do projects anywhere
Oh.
around the city.
Absolutely. Sorry, I misunderstood the question. Yes.
And I'd like to see us keep that general fund money that we've set aside for capital work to be spent on capital expenses, not spent on other projects that aren't a capital expense. And that's, I think you're right, if we were to do that in other things, that would make sense.
And Gary had a list of those, where we identified
Mm-hmm.
future projects, and a general fund, freeing up general funds could create funding for those projects.
Can I ask a philosophical and hypothetical question? We talk about these funds. Where are these funds coming from? And if there's no increment to pay them back, how do they get paid back?
They're actually increments. So they're created from the property taxes that come from the developments that happened decades ago.
Right, but we're talking about using TIF funds...
TIF 1.
So, so these are, we still have the increment coming in
Yes.
from previous ones? These aren't the ones that we've set up recently?
No.
This is TIF 1.
TIF 1 is our oldest TIF.
Is the oldest one.
And how many more years do we have on that?
It will come to a close December of 2024, but that means we have to obligate the funds by then. So we have had to, we would have had to make contracts for the money to be spent, but then the money can actually, needs to be spent by the end of 2025.
Got you.
If there is money remaining in a TIF when it ends, that money is distributed to all of the taxing bodies according to their proportional share.
And we don't want to do that, is what we're saying.
Not necessarily. The purpose of setting up a TIF is to make improvements to that area that make development more likely, whether you incentivize private development, or you make improvements to the infrastructure or public assets located therein. Both of those are the goals of TIF.
I'm just curious, with the City Hall renovations, what is the projective increased value from doing those renovations would be?
One is creating efficiency for the services provided to our residents. Right now, you walk into the police department and you kind of spin your head around trying to figure out what, what department is where, and utility billing, you have to walk upstairs to the reception area and then over to utility billing. This would put all of our public-facing departments at City Hall right in this hallway, right outside of City Council chambers. You would have a reception desk, and you would have across from them, the utility billing department, and community development would be in the same place, but you wouldn't need to walk inside the offices. The service counter would be right out there in the reception area. We would also be augmenting employee safety. Right now, anybody can walk upstairs and walk amidst all the offices that are up there, and it, given some of the violent incidents that have happened in the last few years, our employees have told us that they feel unsafe in that environment. And so it allows us to restrict access to the other floors of the building, that people just come into the public hallway if they're meeting with us. We come downstairs and we get them, and we escort them upstairs to our meeting areas. And it also allows us to put the public-facing employees in a protected space, not only from the standpoint of physical safety, but also having lived through, you know, these times of global pandemic, in a safe, more safe from a health perspective as well.
Lauren, did we ever come to a decision on the water line that comes in? Is that part of this redevelopment too?
This is part of the redevelopment, and the plans for the remodeling redevelopment here will be coming back to you. There, we're planning to take them out to bid.
Yeah, we have not, so, no, we've never come back. You guys have never come to a decision on the layout for what's going to happen outside these doors. That will come back to you. We promised to come back to you with a plan, which that's been jumping through the code hoops right now. So, yes, we will be coming back to you with that.
Yes. Yes.
I do like the idea of freeing up the general funds. With that said, I think applying the funds from the TIF directly to projects in and around the TIF is probably a better way to do it, especially just like transparency-wise to the public and to the other taxing bodies. I think they would like that, to see that more than be put back into our City Hall.
Okay.
And I'm not against using it for the City Hall, but that's just, that's just my thought.
And I'm going to not piggyback off of that, but I was going to go, I am kind of leaning towards using it for City Hall, so we can use that money for our future capital budgets, the general fund for capital budgets, because that's our infrastructure that, and we have an identified possibility of how to pay for it, and here's a way to potentially pay for it without having to go out to the taxpayers.
And one of the ways to look at it is that this is a community asset. We make this space available for many community groups to utilize. The League of Women Voters always has the candidacy meetings in here, at the community band practices in here. And, and so we have always maintained it, not just the place where people can get services, but a facility that our community can use.
And I'll jump in and say, the city has been incredibly frugal with this facility. The mayor will tell the story of how we came to get this facility. We didn't really, in the big picture, pay much money for all of this property. The last major remodeling of this building was back in the 90s. I mean, all of us probably have redone carpeting and everything in our home-owned homes several times since then. So we really have tried to use the public's money as best as possible in this building. We do not, I'll take you up to Itasca, you can see the fireplace in the front lobby of their village hall. You know, it's really not, you know, it always makes me a little queasy when I see things like that. We are not like that in this building. So we've tried to use the public's money as best we can.
If you watch some of the news broadcasts and you see other cities, and you see their, I guess that they have set up for their city councils, some of it's pretty shocking, you know, that you look at some of the desks, some of the way, some of the things are set up. I'm sure they've got, you know, a ton more money spent on a regular basis to keep them looking like that, or to build the facility that they built in with. I mean, even if we just start thinking about the different police departments, fire departments, other things that have been built throughout the Fox Valley in the last 10 years, there's a lot of multimillion-dollar buildings that are out there that we haven't had to do. I mean, we did build two fire stations, but that wasn't, you know, it wasn't even $15 million. I mean, it's still a lot of money, but when you look at some places that'll spend $15 or $20 million on a single building, you know, that's a huge number compared to what this building has cost over its lifetime.
I'm going to, I read it differently, and I agree with Tom, because I don't think you're saying we shouldn't fix the building. It's where that money goes. It's a philosophical thing, and that's kind of what I started to get to. I don't know if I want to go down this rabbit hole, but, you know, 1 Washington, for example, when we talk about, when we were talking about that, well, we could end the TIF early. We use that when we're selling the TIF, but then at the end of the TIF, we say, hey, we got seven more years, we could spend this money. It's like the tolls were never meant to last forever, right? 355, oh, once it's paid for, we're taking the tolls out. Well, that, that never happened. So we just got to be careful about that. Philosophically, it is right to keep the money closest to where that, that TIF is and investment, because that's really what they're
Agreed.
there for. But you've done a nice job of justifying, this is, I mean, this, this is for the whole community, so we really could apply it anywhere. But it's just, how do you want to debate it and
No, it's a good point.
...about it forever.
It's a good point.
And I think it's, it's, it's much easier to justify to the public when you spend money on streetscape, when you spend money on, you know, a bridge or whatever else that's, you know, readily apparent to everybody that that's public, and that gets used by everybody, or that even draws in more economic development or development in any shape or form, where this doesn't.
Right.
You know, this is just part of what we need to have to operate a city, you know, and house the employees that we need to have. So it...
And the value that Jennifer brought up, you know, that increment, there's plenty of it, it's just not in tax increment that we can measure. It's in, you know, employee safety and efficiencies and all of that, it's hard to measure. Yeah, I think City Hall is important though, too. I mean, so we're not Itasca, but have you guys been to the City of Aurora City Hall recently? Oh, yeah. So I went down there and got a transfer tax stamp for a quitclaim dude. That place is not nice. And you walk in, and it is, it is grim. And the people, it looks like, you remember the movie Beetlejuice? When they're in the waiting room? That's what that place is like. And that's some of the people I saw there, too, I felt like.
They put their money in the police department.
Yeah.
I wouldn't use the elevator.
No. Yeah, the elevator's interesting.
They had the box fans in there because it was so hot. I mean, it was, so I mean, I do think City Hall is an important thing that is for the community, and people can justify, because I can guarantee you, if you have a Batavia resident make a choice, and you give them choice A and choice B, they're not going to choose the City of Aurora City Hall, because I don't know when the last time they put any money in that place was.
It's also a first impression for people who are coming to talk to us about bringing their business here, talking about doing a huge redevelopment project with us. And I'm not arguing that, you know, we should make it look like Itasca or the Taj Mahal, but it should be something that we're really proud of.
Here's one way to look at it is, you know, and I'm thinking more of the infrastructure. Doing this is like, eh, whatever. It's one way to use the money, but right now, we are using are using taxpayer money to, it's budgeted to do this. If, if we could use taxpayer money to do infrastructure in our community that will benefit more of them and just have the TIF money to take care of this, then it's not resident money that's updating, you know, it's, it's increment that's paying for this, paying for the City Hall.
So, to your point, um, although we are using half of our ARPA funds to apply to the Carriage Crest project, we still have a shortfall there. And so, to your point, that could be money that gets diverted to that capital project instead of this capital project.
Yeah.
And for Mark, it's always about having money to pay for it.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a little bit of left pocket, right pocket. Doesn't-
It's all tax money.
It's all-
Except that one of the pockets, you can only use certain things.
Understand that. And, and I agree with some of the philosophy, and I'm, I'm kind of with Tom on this, is that I'd rather not spend it here. And, and the reason, just, it's that perception. There's too many people that, and again, we spent nothing on this building to buy it, relatively nothing, in the grand scheme of things. And people always look at it and like, why is the City Hall in like, the nicest building in Batavia? And people are like, you should sell that. And it's like, okay, and go spend 30 million building a new facility? It's just not reasonable. And people don't see that. So, if they see us saying, okay, well, we got this money that we said we were going to use in all this whole area here, and we go and we put it into this building, I, there's just a perception of it, I think, even though-
I understand.
-we're still going to spend the money, and we have opportunities to spend the money within this TIF or joining adjacent TIFs. It's more of a perception thing, in, in my opinion. So, I'd rather not put it here.
In TIF 2, is that the, what we used for the steps of the library?
I remember.
Do you recall?
Before my time.
I think that was the one and only project that was done with the TIF money in TIF 2.
Yeah, and I think that was actually money from TIF 1 that was used for that, because TIF 2 really doesn't generate anything, correct? Because TIF 2 is just the library property. That's why.
Right. That's right.
Which doesn't generate any tax money. And I think we did use-
200,000 or something?
Yeah, like 200,000 from that to, to do those. You know, that was going to be one of the other streets. I was going to talk about that. If we wanted to do something adjacent to TIF 1 that-
What? Peggy was ready to respond.
Yeah, I'm sure Peggy has the exact number. We gave her a few minutes, she'd find everything. Yeah, I, I think that, you know, Water Street is another one that, that needs improvement. And yet, I don't think we're able to do that till we have an idea of what's going to be over there or going to be south of that, because do we go through whatever it takes to try to build a wall behind the library and put another sidewalk down there?
You mean, should the library go and do what they said that they were going to do?
Well, I was going to say, you know, the, the reality is, is that has to be a project that's not just funded by the city, you know, to be able to do that, because that is a very, I'll call it undesirable area on the west side of that street. Well, you know what? They're coming soon to talk to us and we'll sit down and talk to them about it when they're here. And I'm sure you won't let me forget.
Should we see if Peggy has anything to add?
Peggy, did you want to say something to us?
No, I was just going to point out that TIF 2 did not generate any funds. And I'll look up to see. I don't think we contributed anything for the library stairs, but I'll confirm that.
I thought we made them pay for it, when they-
They had applied it for a grant, but I think that it was, ended up that we didn't. But I'll, I'll check before you're done. I'll, I'll get it for you.
Thanks, Peggy.
Okay. Thank you.
Alan, um, I think, I don't know if it was stated how much money was left in TIF 1. Is there enough to do multiple projects?
Yeah, there's, there will be about $5 million generated before the end of the TIF between now and then.
Okay.
See, I think one thing for us to keep in mind is if somebody comes in here next month or six months from now and says, hey, I need $2.5 million to do this project and build this building downtown, that is going to take priority over any one of these projects we're talking about tonight.
Right.
So, let's remember that, that the, the reality of what TIF is intended to do first and foremost, to generate-
Development.
-new development.
Yeah.
That if that comes in, all these other things take the backseat.
Well, and that's what I was going to continue saying was, um, I'd be curious to see how this plays along with our, that downtown plan proposal also, once we get more information about that. But I would like to see, if we are left with the money, to see it causing further development in our downtown. Um, so to Mark's point, doing another Wunorf, because I'm also looking at the TIF 1 map and it does look like the Island Avenue, oops, sorry, South, um, isn't TIF 1. So, in, I mean, River Street's looking great. There's so many people down there regularly. Um, there, are there ways we can still enhance that? Absolutely. But let's continue developing. Let's continue adding to our town where then that can start drawing in. I mean, with um, the new brewery going in, like, we have opportunity to now develop other areas and put money there, too, so.
So, one of the devil's advocate positions always was, when the framework plan was built, was that the city would build the first, first Wunorf and then developers would help to contribute towards all future Wunorf's as part of their project. So, it's always Shumway, I'm not saying it shouldn't be a Wunorf, but it should be a Wunorf in the context of the development of South Shumway and everyone working together, developer and city, to create a comprehensive project as opposed to the city just writing a big check and then the developer getting to build a building right next to a brand new road that the city paid.
So, with the BEI project, are they able to use some of the TIF 1?
We can use TIF 1 funds to incentivize projects in TIF 3. So, there are different ways that redevelopment agreements might be structured. In, in the case of One Washington Place, it was structured so that the increment created by the project, that alone was utilized as the incentive for the project. And the city was getting an $11 million parking, public parking garage, and the developer was going to be reimbursed for $5 million of TIF reimbursable costs. The first presentation that came to us from the developers for the Shumway project was um, a project that at that time was estimated to uh, generate about $8.5 million in increments, but they were asking for a little bit more than $11 million. And so, in that case, we would have to look for other sources in order to fund that increment. And so, that would have to come from um, existing increments in TIF 3 or increment that is available from adjacent TIFs, such as TIF 1.
And if, if I remember correctly, um, if we were to do that, use that increment from TIF 1, let's say that project goes, that would have to be allocated and paid for by the end of 2025.
That's correct. But it, um-
Right.
What happens in projects like this is that if bonds are issued in order to provide that incentive, the early bond payments, there isn't sufficient increment coming off of the project because it's, it's not yet complete and not yet um, occupied. And so, there's that, those lag years. And so, that increment could be used to service the bonds in those years.
But would you be able to pay that out over the first couple of years if it doesn't get completed until the TIF 1 was over?
Yes, because that's being generated every year. And so, that, those, those funds are available because they're coming in from TIF 1.
And if we had them allocated, but then you said that when TIF 1 ends in '24, in '25, we have to spend that money. That has to be spent by the end of '25. So, how would we be able to keep that and pay that out later? Or we'd have to pay that all at one point?
We would have to pay it out all by the end of 2025.
Okay.
But it is, it has been obligated because it would be written into a redevelopment agreement that we owed those payments.
Okay.
So, it wouldn't necessarily have to be paid out. It would just be obligated.
Right.
Okay. So, because-
It would have to be paid out by the end of 2025, but our, you know, if our bond payments are um, a million and a 1.4 million per year or something like that, we will be able to utilize. It just depends upon how much the, the bond issuance is.
So, just thinking of the timeline of what we went through with the One Washington Place, what is the possibility that a presentation could come in and we go through all of this and allocate it and have a project that has started to where we have to start making a payment?
Long shot.
And that's why I think these projects are important, because if we were to use that money for those projects, the money that we would have used for those projects could make those payments, if, if we so desired. And that would be our choice. And that's why I think it's great to think about these, but again, the main thrust would be to use the TIF money to help with development.
And that's, we really wanted to have this conversation just to get everyone thinking about it, just to start thinking about these projects. We all really want to do redevelopment.
Right.
Ideally.
Could we kind of go through the different projects and what the potential cost could be? Like, the river stabilization, you think it would be the full $5 million?
You, you-
Could be.
Every bit of the $5 million, I don't remember if they-
Any of it.
And then some.
Yeah.
And we still wouldn't get it all done.
And then what do you think about the River Street one-way?
One-way is, is, it depends if I dot, remember we still have to go back for I dot? Depends if they make us do the intersection at, at Washington and State, because-
Let's, let's plan that they're going to do that.
Yeah.
Worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario, 200, 250,000.
And then the City Hall construction?
Catenary lighting over there, probably 100,000, worst-case scenario. I would guess less than that.
And then this is 1.5.
This is roughly 1.5 million.
And then probably to switch something over to a Wunorf would be 5 million?
That's probably not a bad number.
And then what about-
And we remember, the first Wunorf was 3.5 million for less than a, a short block, basically.
And then what about if we were to do a contribution to the lights to the church?
I gotta imagine that's fairly small, right? I mean, that's 50 grand.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, 30 to 50.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have to use the orange extension cords anymore.
So, even if we use the money towards remodeling City Hall, there's still a significant amount of money left.
Right. If we don't get any development projects in.
Yeah.
You know, and I'd bring up another one that I wrote down when we started this, was we still haven't finished the Newsboy Alley.
The arch?
Newsboy Alley?
Arch.
The gate?
Gate, whatever you want to put out there.
Thank you. That, I mean, 50,000, let's just throw 50 in number on it.
I mean, regardless of what we do on all the rest of this stuff and all of the developments, I think that's one thing we ought to complete, because we've done everything.
Have we had the money for that sitting aside? Haven't we had that for years?
I don't know that that money is in the budget.
It's never been-
It's never been in the budget.
We can put it in 2023 and then we can have, you know, a, a request for proposals for the design of that and see what we get and install it.
And we promised Alderman Brown that we would do the project.
Yeah, I mean, I think that has to get, get done, or else we'll have to run again. Make sure it gets done. So, does anybody else online have any comments or questions for this tonight?
No, I will.
Okay. So, when do we want to revisit this? Because I think this is something that we have to keep thinking about, keep talking about. You want to go six months?
Well, I think staff will bring them back, discussions in the context of the 2023 budget.
Okay.
We just introduced the topic tonight and-
Okay.
And three or four months from now, we'll be back.
Back with it.
I think the only thing possibly sooner would be the um, changing the funding for this building.
Yeah.
That would be a budget amendment.
Yeah. And I would say, my personal feeling would be, if we are going to do any from this, from the TIF, it would be partial. I don't think it would be full pay, or should be full payment.
Okay.
Really quick question on the funding of City Hall. That can't be done in arrears, right? You can't go back later and say, oh, we should have done that as TIF, so it has to be-
That's a Peggy question.
Yeah.
It would, excuse me, it wouldn't be much better to do it uh, in the same year. It, it could result in having to do a prior period adjustment, so we wouldn't want to do that. And I just put something in the chat. We did not pay anything to the library for the stairs.
Okay.
I know there was a big discussion about it, but I think we ended up not doing it.
Yeah, I think especially for optics, I think going back and saying, yeah, we're going to take and move money around and take it out of the TIF to go back and pay for something we already did at the city, I think would not be the best way to do it.
So, if I'm going to go on a limb, if I'm going to go on a limb, just based on how the construction industry is right now, I think we're going to be doing some work in 2022 and, and probably folding into 2023.
You're right.
Just, it's crazy, as you all know, right now. So, I won't be surprised if construction doesn't roll over into the next budget year.
Because we're not beginning until August.
August, September.
And we expect it to be a seven-month project.
Yeah. Good luck finding contracts.
Well, that's my, yeah, that's exactly my point, so.
But we do think it, think it prevailing wage, so they're like that.
Yeah. Okay, I think we are done with the discussion. And now we can move on to item seven, an update on project status update.
So, rather than go over the things that I went over yesterday evening, I wanted to ask, um, does City Council want to meet on uh, May 31st? It's the fifth Tuesday and we do have business items that we could put on that agenda, but we could also push that. I, I ask because it's the holiday weekend, so right before, and a lot of, you know, some people might be traveling and, and not back by then.
I'm traveling.
I'll be happy to take it off and take my wife out to dinner for her birthday.
There you go.
That's true. I, I mean, I'm sure we could have uh, consensus if there's stuff to get done, but it's not any item-
May 31st. Yeah, Tuesday, May 31st. Monday's the holiday.
I already got deposition scheduled on, I'm working, so whatever anybody wants to do, but I, they've already scheduled me up in my regular job.
I'll be around. I'm here.
Okay, um, what I'll do is I'll send out an email and if I get at least eight responses that, um, we'll have people here and we'll have a quorum, then we'll go ahead and schedule a meeting.
I'd rather have a meeting than to fill a meeting till we're here till midnight.
Be here four hours, the next meeting?
Exactly.
Yes, I agree with that.
I, I do see a lot of things, like-
Next week, June.
Coming up. Yeah. June, June looks to be like it's going to be a very busy month, so.
Let's have a meeting, let's get some stuff knocked out.
That sounds good. Um, I also wanted to let everybody know, this is from the police department, and um, just wanted to let you know that our police department is going to be hosting King County Emergency Management for some joint training that's titled Youth Preparedness. And uh, youth emergency and disaster preparedness students will learn about the difference between an emergency, a disaster, and a hazard, as well as what types of emergencies to be prepared for, protective actions to take, and family emergency communication plans, disaster supply kits, go bags, gun safety, and what to do during severe weather. A first aid CPR instructor will teach age-appropriate basic first aid, including responsive versus unresponsive, phoning for help, when to call 911, personal protective equipment, the importance of hand washing, finding the problem, stopping bleeding and choking. The class will end with the kids receiving a go bag and a tour of the building. The classes are not intended to scare kids, but rather, rather age-appropriate, fun, and educational to build confidence and empower them to be prepared. The classes will be held June 4th at the City of Batavia Municipal Center, 100 North Island Avenue. Registration is required and space is limited. Registration links can be found on the city website and the police department Facebook page. Um, just, it sounds like a wonderful program that we are partnering with King County to provide for the youth in our uh, community, um, so that they are going to be prepared in the event of emergency, disaster, or a hazard. Uh, and then I just wanted to forward an email message to you that I received from Lauren Underwood's office. Um, and it looks like she is going to make um, funding for the grant for the relocation of the food pantry and clothes closet, one of her top priorities. the grant for the relocation of the food pantry and clothes closet, one of her top priorities. Um, her office let me know that they are in the process of preparing a press release that we should receive in the next couple of days that we can put out to announce, um, that to the community. This isn't a guarantee that we will receive funding, because it still has to, um, be approved by Congress. And so, um, we, we will cross our fingers, but, uh, as you know, that can be kind of an arduous process. And, um, but, the, we should finally hear by, um, early next year that the funding is available. But thus far, it's been very good news, and we are so appreciative of both, just the opportunity to apply to Congresswoman Underwood's office, but also the support that we received from, uh, her staff. And, uh, she personally called the food pantry today to let them know.
That's a good thing. Okay. Fermi, anybody have any questions?
Anne, also. Thank you. Fermi. Um, so, we have a First Amendment to a grant of easement for a weir structure and stormwater, uh, detention. And why this agreement is extremely important right now is that we have a project that's going on, on, uh, on Kirk Road to, uh, create a new detention structure that's really going to help with holding water back in, um, major rain events, um, to protect against flooding for the residents over there on the east side. If our, uh, contractors that we currently have working on the west side of the street are able to, um, complete this project on the east side of the street, uh, at, at the same time, this is just going to enhance the, uh, positive effects that this will have on, uh, preventing future flooding in that neighborhood. And I'm happy to report that we have come to an agreement with Fermi on the language for this agreement, but time is of the essence at this point. And I know that, you know, you cannot give a City Council approval at this meeting, but if you, uh, would be comfortable giving me direction, that, um, you would approve the mayor signing this, and then I would put it on the agendas for the, uh, future media, I, I would just put it on the next City Council meeting for your approval.
What did they end up, what was the language they ended up agreeing on for the, uh, this was the whole situation where we had the city attorney here?
Yes. Um, they agreed to exactly, they agreed to exactly the language that we requested, which was adding in that, um, the toward immunity.
Toward immunity.
It was that sentence.
That's what we wanted.
They gave up exactly what we wanted, so...
That makes sense.
Okay, thank you. But I wanted to ask, and Mayor's here tonight, and I've got three copies of the agreement for him to sign. Thank you very much.
So, on top of that project, are they still moving along as planned, on schedule, on the west side of the Woonorf?
Yes. And that's why this was really important, because they're done. And we don't want them to move on to a next project, because then this would be next year that we would be doing this.
Equipment there. So, I know I might get emails, when is the planting going in and the restoration, now that they're done with the actual construction portion?
Right. So, we are working through the planting right now. Uh, the arborvitae's are technically out of the planting season, so the contractor, we feel, is going to be motivated to, uh, wrap up the project, so that they can be done with the project. The planting season for arborvitae's is technically ended, but, but we're trying to work with the contractor, if he can give us an extra year of warranty. You know, with the weather right now, last week is not indicative. Last week was in the 90s, but it, that's a little odd of the ordinary. That set records. This week, we're back in the 60s and 70s, and we certainly could be planting. So, we are working to try and get those plants planted and get the contractor completed.
Sounds good. Thank you for the update.
Does anybody else have any others? Okay, then I will need a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by you or second by Saron? Roll call, please.
Ewer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Boba Singer? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado? Beck? Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.